All right, then we will call the Virtual Planning Commission Meeting, March 17th, 2021, to order, and we'll begin with your own call.
Sure, Commissioner Port.
Here.
Commissioner Galka is here. There he is. Commissioner Bracken? Commissioner Prenovo?
Here.
Vice Chair Robertson is not here yet, but expected. Chairman Salvick?
Here.
And Chairman Commissioner McLean is excused.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Do we have anyone tuning in tonight from the, any citizens that are partake, participating in the meeting?
No.
Okay, then I will skip the citizen comments portion since that doesn't apply. And we'll move right to the main topic tonight, which is a work session for House Bill 2001. And I will eagerly await your presentation.
You make it sound like it's going to be wonderful and entertaining.
Planned about it.
Try to make it as entertaining as possible. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
So I have been hinting at this for the last couple of months. House Bill 2001 has been approved by the state legislature in 2019. Basically, what this is, is it's called the missing middle housing rule. And it requires medium-sized cities which fall under the category of 10,000 to 25,000 residents to allow for duplexes in any single-family residential zone and in a zone that allows for a single-family dwelling. Large cities are also required to do this. On top of that, they're required to allow triplexes and fourplexes as part of the same standards. Luckily, we are not a larger city at this point, so we just need to worry about the duplexes. And so in 2019, the bill was passed, and the Department of Land Conservation and Development was tasked with drafting a model ordinance to implement this bill. If we do not adopt our own ordinance, that model ordinance becomes effective on July 1st of this year until we do adopt our own ordinance in kind. There's a couple of things that I'll go through. The city has control over siting and design with restrictions. But we don't have control over certain factors that I'll go over on the next slide. And just to make sure that we're clear on what a duplex definition is, it's, our code currently identifies it as two attached dwellings on a single lot or parcel. The new state legislation allows for duplexes to also be defined as two detached dwelling units on a lot or a parcel. One of the things that I'll be asking for some guidance on from the commission is whether or not you want to allow for a detached duplex definition, or whether or not you want to only allow for an attached product. And we'll kind of go through that in the next couple of slides. So what are we required to do? We are required to allow duplex wherever a single-family home is permitted. So that's going to be in the low-density, mixed-density, high-density residential zones, as well as a mixed-use zone. And within that, those zoning designations, it would be permitted on any lot of record within those zones, even if they don't meet the minimum lot size standards. Other key changes that we have to do, no ifs, ands, or buts to it. For accessory dwelling units, which we currently permit, we cannot require any parking onsite for those dwelling units. And for duplexes, we can require a maximum of two parking spaces per duplex. This is a 50% reduction on what our current code allows for. Our current code treats duplexes and single-family units the same way. In terms of, we look at a single-family dwelling unit, and that requires two spaces per unit. Right now, our code requires two spaces per dwelling unit per duplex, which means it would be a total of four spaces on the property. This specifically says that we have to literally treat it just like a single family. So if a single family only requires two parking spaces, a duplex can only require two parking spaces. And then we must also allow for a home that's a single-family home to be converted into a duplex. And we actually already allow for that, but that is also required if we don't do that. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to jump in at any point in time. But seeing none, I can keep going. So this is where I get to ask you guys questions. Like I said, we went over what we have to do, and we've already drafted some code language to address what we have to do. Now, as I finish up the draft code language, I kind of want to get an idea of what you guys are willing to consider. So right now, on the left of your screen, what we permit currently is an attached product. So any way that it's attached, whether it's through a garage, a wall, or a stacked concept, we currently allow that in our code, and we have to allow that under the new code. Under the new code, we can permit a detached concept, which is what you see in the middle screen. And then on the right side of the screen, it's kind of a weird breezeway thing that they've identified as a possibility. So if you want to consider something attached as a non-structure attachment, we can look at that. I can keep going and talking about this a little bit, but if, do you guys have any initial considerations of whether or not you're thinking of an attached only or a detached option as well?
I have one question.
Yeah.
So, and I think it goes along trying to answer this question, but what we're doing, the state is telling us that we can, we don't have jurisdiction or ordinance, or ignore an ordinance of having proper lot sizes. So if we're going to put a detached duplex on a small 5,000-square-foot lot, are we eliminating our setbacks? And then go to a zero lot line?
No. What the state law says is that we shall treat a duplex in the same manner as we treat a single family. A single-family home currently has a 20-foot rear setback, five-foot side setbacks or more, and a minimum of a 10-foot front setback. A duplex property, whether it's attached or detached or other that we haven't thought about, would still have to fit under those same setback standards because we're applying them uniformly. The detached concept comes into play if, say, you have a larger property that's not the 5,000, but say you have a 7,000 or 9,000-square-foot property. You can do a detached-type product within the same standards of the setbacks that we currently prescribe. But some people look at a detached product as something that might fit more within the characteristics of a single-family neighborhood, because it looks like two single-family homes on a property, rather than the larger mass of a duplex. You're not going to see the application of a detached product in every single application of a duplex, but it's one of those of, if you want to provide it as an option, if a lot permits it under the guise of the setbacks, then that's an option available to them.
Kelly, could you shed some light on the manufactured home issue part of this? And that, that might help kind of guide us as far as attached versus detached.
Sure. So right now, our code, which is consistent with our comprehensive plan, which is consistent with the state requirements, allows for manufactured homes of a certain size, at least a double-wide or larger, and at least 1,000 square feet, can be placed on a single-family residential lot, as long as it is built and designed of a certain characteristic. And that's already all spelled out in our code. We would want to make sure that we treat duplexes in the same manner as a single-family home. So if we allow for a manufactured home to occur as if it were a single-family, we would want to ensure that the code allows for manufactured homes to occur as duplexes if we do allow for the detached duplex concepts. What we can do is we can add language within the code that says that you shall, in terms of design characteristics, both units shall be constructed in the same manner. So you don't have a stick-built, single-family home. And then because the lot size accommodates it now, then they can put a manufactured home in the back. You want to create some sort of consistency within design of a property. And so you would put in provisions within the code to say, if you're going to have a detached product, that detached product must be built in the same manner. So if you're going to do, if you're going to do a manufactured home, both of them shall be manufactured homes and follow the characteristics already prescribed within our code to ensure that it is consistent in design with a single-family neighborhood. Samuel, you're muted. There we go.
You guys hear me? How about, how about now?
How about now? Yep.
Yep.
I'm going to stop sharing my screen for a second so I can get to the...
So, am I, I guess, in my mind is a, it's an attached building. It's one building with a wall in the center. So having, to me, a detached is just two houses. So I, that's what I'm trying to do.
You got Samuel, try again?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, guys. So, Kelly, I don't want to dive too far now. I know we're still going with the presentation, but I don't think that we can allow the single-family, a single-family home to be built as a manufactured home. As far as I know, manufactured homes are built inside, like in a factory. That's technically a manufactured home. So a single-family home is stick-built on foundation, like right there. And a manufactured home isn't built like a single-family home. It's built in a warehouse somewhere. So if you were to build it outside, I don't know if that'd be technically considered a manufactured home. It'd be like an ADU, or you would have it something, you, I don't think it, it could be built the same way. And you would tag them along, the single-family, because manufactured homes, I thought, were built indoors, and single-family are outside. So I don't know if you could do it the same way. Is that right?
The manufactured home is a type of home construction, or absolutely right. It's built in whole at a factory, split into however many units, and then brought in unit sizes onto a property, and then assembled and put together.
Yes.
For the purposes of a definition, single-family dwelling or a single-family property simply is defined as one singular unit on that lot or parcel. And then how that unit is constructed, our code provides for provisions of, if you are going to place a manufactured home on that lot, that manufactured home shall be of a certain size, and it shall be designed and oriented in a certain way. But that would still, because it is a single dwelling on a single lot, per land use code, it is still defined as a single-family dwelling. It's just constructed in a different manner and placed on the property in a different manner. And so we're talking about number of units on a property, not necessarily the construction type of the units. You get into the construction type of the unit when you're talking about, if we want to put standards in our code that say both units must be constructed of a similar, of the same manner. And if you do that, then it's why they're allowed for two manufactured homes that are separate dwelling units on a property that are detached dwelling units. And since there are two of them on a single parcel that cannot be sold separately, that is defined as a duplex per the state and per our code at this point.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
And so the question comes into play. We shall require an attached product, which is what we allow for now. The design modifications that are under your purview is whether or not you want to allow for a detached concept. If you allow for that detached concept, you have to add in that conversation about, do you allow for manufactured homes? You have to allow for the manufactured home if you allow for detached. You can say they must be built and designed in the same manner. So that's where you get two manufactured homes. You would limit the ability of somebody having a single-family home on a property, and then just putting a manufactured home on the back of the property because they have the site availability for it. So you would have to do stick-built, stick-builts, or manufactured home and manufactured home. All of this conversation only comes into play if you allow for the detached duplex conversation to occur.
So Kelly, I, to piggyback on Todd just a little bit ago, the whole point with attached is it's essentially one building. We're just allowing them to section it off. But with detached, I mean, it's literally two different houses. What is, I guess, my question would be, what are the pros and cons for, between the two? As far as a city planning perspective?
Well, so if you do the detached option, what that does is it allows for a larger lot, say of 7,000 or 9,000 square feet of some sort. It allows for that larger lot to construct two, what appears to be two single-family homes on a property. If you are doing that within the confines of a neighborhood that's already developed as a single-family neighborhood, well, the continuity of design where it's two smaller, traditional-looking, single-family homes on a lot provides for a continuity of neighborhood appearance. Other than that, it gives developers and it gives property owners the flexibility to design what fits for them and what fits for their property if they want to do the detached option, or if they want to do an attached option. The attached option is absolutely the traditional view of a duplex. There's nothing wrong with it. There's no need to go beyond that. The detached option opens up more things for us to consider, but it also opens up the development community and the market to dictate the additional options that they might have available to them at that point.
Kelly, how does that affect the property tax base? Basically, you put in two households on one property, tax, tax lot.
It's... Yeah, it's assessed at the same rate as a duplex is assessed. Whether it's a detached concept or an attached concept, it's assessed the same way. I will admit that I don't know enough about how property taxes are assessed based off of a different unit type. But, you know, a duplex is going to be based off of a duplex standard, no matter how it is constructed.
My question is, I know you said if one, if one was stick-built and the other also had to be stick-built. And if one was a manufactured, the other also had to be a manufactured as well. I guess far as curb appeal goes, is there, is there any requirement for them, you know, for it to be of the same design? You know, I mean, maybe even the same color, you know, scheme? Because I mean, when you, when you have a duplex, it's one building, you know, two different residences. But, you know, they're all the same designs, the same color concept, all that kind of stuff. I mean, can we require any of that?
You can, but then I would highly encourage you to establish minimum design standards for single-family homes as well. Because remember, we have to make sure that whatever we are applying to a duplex shall also be applied to a single-family home. Right now, we do not apply any design standards in terms of windows other than egress requirements for building code, in terms of roof pits other than, you know, a manufactured home. We don't dictate that in our code now, and I think most people would identify that as a positive, that we don't dictate. If we were to do that for a detached duplex concept, that, my only way to be able to do that would be to universally apply it to residential development in general. And so that, that opens up the other key of other questions associated with maybe...
Yeah, and if you're a developer and you're building two manufactured homes in a neighborhood, I don't think you would make it aesthetically unpleasing for your neighbors, too. Like, one, one wouldn't be orange, and one wouldn't be yellow. I think they'd make it, if you were a developer, you'd try to make it aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. So I think it's a good question, but I don't think that we would, we would go to those waters.
That's a good point, but I would say that we aren't speaking about developers here. When we allow these kinds of things, it means you and I and Todd and everybody on here can potentially build another house on their property. So that means you're not going to have the continuity necessarily.
Right. You have to take the infill standard, rather than just the new development as well, when you do a detached.
Yeah, one thing that comes to mind, coming from Portland, like, and hearing this, I'm thinking, they certainly have, like, the miniature homes in mind, right, as they're going about this. But I don't really see that being a big thing here in Lebanon. So it might be in our favor to not allow the detached. That's just my, where I'm going with this personally.
I'm with it. I'm actually, I'm actually for it. I don't see it being a big thing in Lebanon, maybe now, but, you know, I think we're growing, and I think that the option should be there. Just starting out with, and we're probably going to run into problems as, you know, things go on. Hey, should we add this? Should we amend this? Or do that? But I think, I think having it in there in the beginning would be good. That's just me. And I'll see a benefit right now, maybe kind of going on what Mr. Galka was saying. It's like, hey, maybe there's no benefit now, but I think having it now, and kind of hashing it out as time goes on, and maybe some improvements later on that we could see. It's better to have and not need than to need and not have.
Okay.
Samuel, are you, are you saying that have the option to do detached or have it in there where it can't be detached? I wasn't clear which, which way you were going with it.
I'm going for, have the option to allow the detached. I think Commissioner Galka, kind of, I kind of get what he's saying a little bit on the Portland vibe. And maybe there's not a need for current Lebanon residents right now to do it, based on our, the current lot sizes. My house off Joyce Street, I can't build another house on that, even though I'm going to have the option to do it. I don't, my lot size isn't big enough to do it. I don't know very many lot sizes. Right now, in Lebanon, at least near the McDonald's where I'm at, is, uh, would it be aesthetically pleasing to even build another house from a manufactured home line? So I think this is for future developers. And again, I understand that it's going to be for people where they're at now, that they can do it. But I don't see very many people where they're at now even doing it. I think this is for a future concept, and I think we should allow it. That's just my opinion for right now.
Well, I like the, I like the flexibility the detached option has. And if, I think it's, it's really, that's going to be a lot-size-dependent thing, where if a lot, if someone has a large lot and they're able to put a detached structure on it, that is probably more appealing in a single-family neighborhood than a, than a larger scab-don duplex, even though it's all up to code. It's just a bigger footprint and everything. So I like the detached option in that regard. I get a little nervous with the manufactured home. If there's a lot with a manufactured home, then all of a sudden, they start throwing down multiple manufactured homes if it's a big enough lot, or they scatter tiny houses all around it. And then you kind of have this mishmash. I don't know. I can only imagine what it looked like. I don't really have a picture that I've seen of what that actually looks like, but it might not fit into a lot of the neighborhoods we have here, as far as the neighborhood connection concerns.
So, just thinking of the properties that I own, they're just about four acres. They're narrow and deep. That's all of the, basically, the east side of Main Street, all those houses over there. Those neighborhoods have long, narrow lots. What I'm hearing is I could take one of those houses and put a house behind it. So I don't even worry about parking. I don't even worry about anything. But now I have just a little walkway. I can get to another house back in my property. I don't know. I, I wouldn't do it, but I just don't agree with it. If it's a duplex, it's a duplex. If we're talking about putting two houses on a lot, that's a different conversation. And it also leads to a lot of the confusions, such as the question of manufactured homes. So, I don't know, I just see a, a really dense population on narrow roads, is what I see. Already was, one of my places on Franklin Street, it's like a highway on Franklin Street. But the road is so narrow, you can barely put two cars on either side of the road to park. So if you start doing this, well, even with the, even with the duplexes, we're not requiring a parking space. So I'm kind of against the whole thing anyway, but that's what we're being asked.
Todd, that, that's an excellent point. We do have a lot of lots that would facilitate stacking another house up behind the one that's there with no real requirement for parking. Then what you're doing is just a walkway around the side of the house to a whole nother single-family residence back there. You could have a household of five, six people with three cars. You're talking, that's a, that's kind of a concern. I don't know if that, I don't know if that will be any more of a problem if we allow detached, or if it's just going to be a problem either way. I think, I lean towards thinking that if you allow detached, it's a lot easier to, to get those houses, we're talking about houses now, behind another house. It would be a lot, a lot less cost for the homeowner if he wants to put a house behind his house, because you don't have to tie into the foundation, you don't have to tie into the roofline, all those different construction aspects. So allowing detached, although I like the idea of it and the flexibility, we might be setting ourselves up to get a bunch of, bunch of double houses on one lot with poor access and zero parking.
And then you got fire issues, fire code issues, I mean...
Listen, we just talked about, we just had a meeting about affordability and the lack of, you know, and again, I know we're just talking about detached or non-detached, right? But we, you know, we talked about, you know, affordability issues and the writ burden, and, you know, the lack of inventory. And whether it's detached or attached, now we have an option to be able to add other homes, whether they're detached or attached. And I understand there might be parking and fire code issues and upfront, but it's, we have an option here to allow more homes, right, whether it's detached or unattached. I, I don't see what the issue is. There's going to be positives and negatives, but more homes is better, detached or not. I don't know. That's what I'm going with. We're still...
I don't see, I don't see how this solves the affordable housing issue. I mean, it's driven by supply and demand. And right now, demand is allowing these houses to go at extremely high pricing. So I'm not sure what putting extra houses on a lot is going to do to drive that price down.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. Not necessarily affordability, but we do have a lack of inventory, right? So if I have a house on a lot, and my lots aren't as big as yours, Todd, but if I have a house or a big lot, and I have the ability to put another house on it, yeah, it's not going to affect affordability issue, but you have another house in a lot that you could rent out, and that's another family home that you could do, right, versus having it be detached. So that is improving the inventory deal that I feel like we have. That's what I thought we were talking about the last couple of meetings, is inventory. And if you want to, and you want to put a house in one of your lots, then you could do that. That's going to help with our inventory issue.
Just something to consider, regardless of where you fall on this side, that's kind of coming to my mind, is also the, the issue of speaking to, you know, the, the lack of homes in general. We've been, and not to belabor the issue, but again, we keep on seeing more apartments coming up, more rentals. Do we want to continue to support things that, I don't know, get people to try and purchase a home versus just renting? Like, what kind of town do we want to be in the future? And I feel like having more detached homes on properties are just going to lead to more rentals. Homes on properties are just going to lead to more rentals personally, maybe not. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there or something. I, that's kind of coming to mind as I think.
You were right, you're right, Josh, and that any one of these that is put up there will have to be a rental. Because you can, you can't sell the house on a lot with another house. It has to be a package deal. So the, whoever owns that land with the house, the original house on it will be renting out the, the second lot or the second structure.
Yeah, that's.
Not to say anything against rentals, but I, I hear what you're saying. Those will all, those will all be rentals. That's my understanding anyway, Kelly.
Forsee it too. And I don't know if that's necessarily a bad thing or not, but just something to consider.
So yeah, the, the, the conversation with the, the severe rent burden. I, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but we are making Nroads. Our numbers went down almost three percent from last year. And that's largely because of the number of rental units that are available at a more affordable cost because of the apartments. The duplexes are, are providing that, that middle housing option. It's that it's for those that are for, you know, starter families and starter homes where they're, they can't quite afford. A, a single family home of their own at this point. And but they need to be in a bigger spot than a, a apartment complex. And it allows for denser areas to, to provide housing. So that you can still have the open areas of development for traditional single family subdivisions. It, it's one of those things that it's providing a, a housing demand that, that is there. And hasn't been fully accommodated yet. The, the difference between what we're talking about right now is. If you allow for an attached, which again, that is the met minimum standard that you have to allow and you don't have to allow anything beyond that. If we allow an attached product only, what you're largely looking at is new development. If you allow for a detached option, you are now opening up properties that like we've been talking about are large enough. To then be able to maintain their home there while also then providing that additional density. And that additional housing units that is defined, defined as needed. There's no wrong and there's, there's no right other than you must allow for an attached product. If there's no generalized consensus and alternative that I can propose is. Right now, we need to ensure that the ordinance that we draft is clear, concise. And 100% meets the, the, the requirements of, of the, the bill. By doing an attached product that absolutely does it. We are going to, like I've been talking about, start the initiation process of a comprehensive plan update, which is also going to include updates to our zoning code. And you are going to have professionals looking at those from every angle and how it all fits together. We can identify that as, as something to look at as part of the greater comprehensive plan and zoning code updates to expand. The detached housing option and look at it more holistically at that point, if you would like to as well. So that we take care of the bill now and then make sure that it's on the list of things to address later. That's also an option if you want to pursue that or we can pursue both now.
I would lean towards adopting the attached standard, which is the minimum standard. And then we, we give us some time to review and contemplate this allowing for detached. I think with that, Samuel brought this up and, and Josh kind of alluded to, to, we need to work towards getting some kind of tiny home. Tiny home verbiage in our, in our code. So we can address that because that's going to be coming sooner rather than later, I think. And that, that'll, that I see, I see that as its own separate, separate. Part of the planning book and the development code. That'll be its own chapter, this tiny housing or. You know, you could have it be a adjunct to RV parks, which aren't allowed in the city, but.
Right.
What do you guys, what do you guys think about that? We, we adopt the minimum standard, which is allowing for duplexes on single family homes as long as they're attached. And that gives us more time to, to think over and maybe have another discussion. Over the allowing for detached.
I think that's an excellent suggestion and also maybe we'll get some more commissioners involved in the conversation as well. Don and the other ones that are gone. I'd like to hear from them as well. That's a good starting point.
Anybody else?
I'm with that as well. I think I've done in June and I think it'd be great to have some, some new commissioners on to kind of hear what they have to say as well. So I think adopting the one we, we got now for just the, the attached ones and then moving forward as time goes on.
All right. How far in do, do we make into your presentation, Kelly?
We're not done.
Oh man, I thought we just wrapped it up.
Let me go back to sharing my screen, but I do truly appreciate the, this conversation. It helps me try to, to build a code around what everybody who lives here would, would like to see. So I appreciate it. So we finished that part of the conversation. The next part are different things to consider. But let's go with the second point because that's going to be the easiest one to discuss. Right now, our code allows for lot averaging for single family home subdivisions and zero lot line residential development. The lot averaging allows for if you have a development, uh, the subdivision of at least 10 properties. Some of those properties can be smaller than the minimum lot size, as long as you, you balance it out with other properties that are larger than the minimum lot size. Again, it's currently just for single family homes, but we have to allow it to be inclusive of duplexes as well. And same for the zero lot line development type, this conversation kind of doesn't. It's moot at this point because the only concern was if it was a detached housing project. But zero lot line allows for through subdivisions, one lot line can be a zero lot line setback. As long as you're next to another property that also has a zero lot line setback. So you have a wider side yard and a wider open space area. Both of these within our code would have to include duplexes. And it is something to consider. However, what I will say is we've had lot averaging on the books. And in speaking to those that have been in the city for the last 20 years, they've only seen one application with it. So it's not really something that I think is a huge concern. And similarly for the zero lot line development, it is not used on a regular basis. But it is something that is going to have to change or at least want to make sure that you guys are aware that that's what would be incorporated. And so there's the possibility that duplexes could occur in those types of development types. But I don't see that as something that would occur often if ever. Are there any concerns of just leaving it as it is and, and making it consistent with HB 2001 and, and moving on?
Are you referring solely on the lot averaging?
The lot averaging and the zero lot line development.
Well, what, do you foresee any issues when specifically referring to the type of building and add-ons? We're going to talk about seeing.
No. To be blunt.
Okay. Well, I like it. Then I, then I say, yeah, let's move on. We'll keep it as is.
Okay, Samuel. So that one's easy. We've already talked about the manufactured home things. So we get to move on from there. For the airport overlay zone, I've asked this question from DLCD. I have not gotten anything back from them. Basically, our code requires for a reduction of number of units in an area. Based off of where they are within the airport approach zone. What our code currently says is if you are within 500 feet of the runway. Then you can only develop up to one dwelling unit per acre. If you allow for a duplex, that doesn't meet code, but we also need to make sure that we're still meeting. The airport safety aspect. So I am proposing to just simply change the code to say you can have a maximum of two dwelling units per two acres. And then the way you're allowing it and you have the code standard. And that's the fix that we have right now. I don't think that we're going to get anything from DLCD that would say that that's not an appropriate fix. But if we do, I'll let you know in the code updates. The last big consideration would be, so as I talked about, there's a, ultimately a 50% reduction in parking requirement. That we're allowed to require. So do you want to consider allowing an incentive to prioritize parking? As a, a need in the, the area. What this incentive would look like is if you provide additional parking beyond the one space per unit. Then we can reduce your rear setback from 20 feet to 10 feet or 15 feet. And that additional seat in the back gives you enough room in the front to provide additional parking. Do you feel that parking is a big enough issue to provide that incentive? Or do you think that there should be a different incentive or do you like the concept?
I personally like incentivizing more parking, but I also am a little hesitant to encroach on the rear setbacks. Just, you know, we're talking about building these units and stacking them against the back fence. We're at someone else's backyard too. So I'm not totally sure which way I want to go on it.
Anybody else?
Well, the way, there's two ways of looking at it. There's one that you develop a piece of property that has a duplex already on that smaller lot. But I also foresee if, if this is opened up to where we can put the example that I provided already, I mean, it. It's attractive. Let's face it, it's attractive to homeowners to not only. Bring value to their property, also income into their household by having a house behind them. And, and but so therefore you don't have that option to be able to, to create parking if your house is already where it's at. Narrow, long lots is what I'm envisioning at my, at, at currently. So I'm not sure what we could do about that, quite honestly.
What would the incentive even be? We, we use the word incentive. What would the incentive be?
So the incentive would be a reduction, at least what I have proposed, that, that we've at least talked through at the staff level is. Five foot reduction in the rear setback to allow for new construction of duplexes. Because we have identified that they would be attached only at this point. With an attached only product, you're looking at new construction. If you set out a new construction with a lesser setback than 20 feet. You can then gain some of that area in the front of the property to provide a larger parking pad for additional parking up front. And so the incentive would be a reduced rear setback in exchange for additional parking beyond the one per unit. Again, this is an option to incentivize additional, additional parking. Or we just accept it as this is what the state has said is the parking demand and this is what you shall provide. And if you want to provide more because the market demands you provide more, then you do so in your own design.
Yeah, I think. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think it's worth giving up five feet of setback for an additional parking space. It's not, it's not going to work on, I would say 95% of the, the properties. But it, when it does, when it does allow itself to trade a five foot, five foot of setback for an additional parking space, I think it'd be worth it. That's just my two cents.
Well, I was just thinking again, and, and you know, the apparatus for fire departments and whatnot, getting through narrower roads. Due to the more parking on the streets. So I, that was the only concern. We already had that issue, I think, in a lot of areas, but we're, we'll be adding to it. That's the only thing, whether or not we, we, I don't, I don't see us getting around that at this point though. So I, I guess I would agree with Jeremy as far as, yeah, it's going to incent five, six, 10 feet, whatever it is to get us closer. I, I certainly understand the concerns of putting a, a house on the, right on the fence, the back fence of somebody else's backyard, but.
Five feet reduction, a 15 foot side backyard is still a decent sized backyard. It's not going to be right up against the property.
Yeah, there's places here that have only 15 foot yards in the back. So, yeah. I, I guess I'm good with that part.
How about Josh and Samuel? What do you guys think?
I've been partial to it. I mean, I could, I could wind either way.
I kind of agree where you guys are going. I, I feel like parking is more of a concern. We're not in inner city. Everybody has to drive here. I mean, that, that seems to be a pretty essential.
Josh Port, you're shaking your head, yes?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with the rest of the guys. Parking's always a problem here. And you know, just like what Todd was saying, I mean, I know we got, I mean, this is mostly going to be new construction if, if I'm, if I'm correct. So I mean. I think giving up five yard or five feet of, of backyard is definitely worth extra parking.
Sounds good. Okay. And I believe we are on my last slide. So one thing that we need to discuss and have you guys provide me direction on. As part of the HB 2001. In addition to our traditional findings that we need to make, we specifically need to be able to make the finding that we have considered certain incentives. For, you know, middle housing and affordable housing. The language says that we need to consider waiving or deferring SDC charges. Consider adopting or amending criteria for property tax exemption. And consider assessing construction excise tax. So I'll kind of go through each of them. And you all can tell me whether or not there's an interest for us at the staff level to continue what we're doing. Or pursue additional actions associated to it. So for waiving or deferring SDC charges, we already have an SDC. For a smaller housing construction of 800 square feet or less. Through some SDC updates that we are currently working on. We are, the SDC working group has actually suggested increasing that to about 1,000 square feet. For reduced SDC charge rather than 800. And that would start to capture a lot of the duplexes on their own. And so by our actions that we're already pursuing through the transportation SDC updates. This is already actively being considered in the city. Another consideration that the group is looking at is to provide a percentage reduction. If you provide for an affordable housing project that is property restricted to affordable housing units. So those are already being considered. Let me know if you guys want us to consider an expansion of that conversation or if you think we're on the right track. For the next one, it's amending the criteria for a property tax exemption. Right now, and again, I know this much about property tax assessments, but. What this would do is if you are providing an affordable housing unit. You can already through the state ask for a, a property tax exemption or reduction. If you have an affordability covenant on that property. We could at the city level, uh, provide for a reduced property tax. If you provide a duplex on the, the property. To promote the, the affordability of, of housing in the city and the property taxes would be reduced associated to that. And then finally, uh, an item that has been recently made available to cities is a construction excise tax. Placed on each building permit associated with new construction or expansion of construction. What this construction excise tax does is it would create a, a pot of money. For the city to then provide incentives to, to properties for construction of affordable housing. Or it would allow cities to purchase properties and then can, and work with a developer to construct affordable housing. On those properties that we purchased with this money. So an example of how this would be used is we adopted construction excise tax. The school district just did one. I think they're charging a dollar 25 per square foot of construction. That would then go to the school district for new school improvements. We could adopt something similar. All of that would come to the city into a pot of money. And then for those that provide for middle. And then for those that provide for middle housing or for those that provide for affordable housing, we can then offer SDC grants for if you are providing that type of housing, we're incentivizing it by saying we will pay with that construction excise tax fund. We will pay your SDC funds for you basically. So those are the, the three options that we must consider. Um, I'd love to hear your thoughts on them. And then if there's any other incentives that you would like us to consider as well.
My favorite is the property tax exemption. You mentioned the state has affordable, but 99% of the people that apply for 4% low income tax credits or 9% competitive tax credits for the state are really, really big developers. So it's unlikely that a single person would apply for any kind of state tax credits for their extra house that they put on their block. So I think it'd be crucial for us to add some kind of city property tax exemption or some kind of help on that. And I, I think that's a great mention. I don't have anything else to add.
Kelly, what's the uh SDC adjustment for the 800 square foot or less? What is that now? How, how, what's the, what's the discount now?
Oh, you were asking a very good question that I don't know off the top of my head, but it's pretty significant from my understanding.
Okay.
I, I can get you exact information and, and provide that to you, but I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, I, I would say not knowing that number, if, if we're already doing that part, then let's keep on doing what we're doing. And especially if you guys are talking about bumping that up to a thousand square feet, that'd be a little more inclusive for the type of stuff we're talking about billing. The last option I do not like at all, I don't think a construction excise tax is the way to address, address this problem. Like a few people have said tonight, we've said many times, the, the biggest, the biggest uh driver of the rental amount is the basically supply and demand. And as soon as we have a surplus of supply, then there's actually some competition for rent. That's, that's going to be what's going to keep the rent down, not, not adding more taxes on and then giving it out to, you know, who knows how to get through the hoop, jump through the hoops. I, I just don't like the idea of a construction excise tax, not for this.
Okay. We have any other comments on that?
Uh, Kelly, can you remind me what S, SDC stands for?
System Development Charges. So we charge a, a property for um, transportation, sewer, water and parks to be able to pay for the infrastructure improvements that the city needs as we grow.
Thank you. I couldn't remember the acronym.
So what I'm hearing is continue looking at SDC um, incentives for middle housing and affordable housing and look into options for property tax exemptions or reductions for middle housing and affordable housing beyond what the state currently provides. Okay.
Yeah, Kelly, on that, I, um, the next time we discuss this, maybe be interesting to know what the, what the property tax rate is on a duplex as opposed to a single family home. So, and what it's going to look like for someone putting a duplex, like what, what that, how much that's going to change your property taxes? That would give us a better idea of like, how much do we need to reduce them? Do we keep them as they are? You know what, and what makes sense? Because if we don't have, we're armed with like solid numbers, I think we'd be making hasty conclusions by saying, yeah, let's, let's drop property taxes 10%.
Right. I, I think for, for the purposes of us being able to get through this uh HB two thousand and one stuff, having this conversation and having my marching orders to add these as something to consider meets the criteria for what we need to get through now. And then we will definitely include that as a, a future conversation this year with a, a lot more detail uh of what that would look like to get further discussion on it.
Perfect.
Any other comments on those? Okay. Go back to this. I think. Yeah. Do you have any questions for me? No?
And I, I don't have any on that. I think we, I think we covered what we, what we're on the hook for covering.
Okay, I think. Let me. Okay, um, so I think that with that information, we'll have to go over all over again because Dawn has now showed up. So we'll do the whole presentation.
Now you don't, I'll just touch base with you. I apologize for being late.
It's okay. Um, okay. So I, I think for, for that aspect, I, I have some really great direction from you guys. We're pursuing attached only, but there needs to be a greater discussion um, when we do an overall code review for a detached option as well. Um, we are going to consider a five foot reduction in exchange for parking and uh parking space in the front of the property. Um, and we are going to continue to consider additional amendments to the SDC charges for further reductions for middle housing and affordable housing as well as property tax exemptions, which I'll come back to a conversation with you guys a little bit later. Does all that sound about right? So then uh, I think that concludes the work session.
Was the um, planning commissioner training going to be brought up tonight or is that for another? Okay.
That'd be great.
That's in our, that's in our next section, which is commission business and comments.
Right.
All right, we're there.
Okay, so um, let me just bring it up really quick. So we have quite the mix of commissioners as we stand right now. Some have been on the commission for years, some for less than a year through all of this COVID situation. Um, and as we've been, and I'm, I guess, still fairly new to the city. I haven't even been here for two years yet. And so um, as we've been going through the public hearings, I have been hearing uh continual questions, which has been great. Um, and so I thought that it would be a good idea to set up a training program um, to sort of go into more depth about the things that aren't necessarily in the development code, but affect to the decision-making process. Um, so that we have a, a, a clearer um framework of understanding associated with it. Um, and then just sort of keep the, the education process and continual uh growth of the planning commissioners for the city. Um, and then what that would ultimately end up being is after we go through all these different training segments, I will now have a great little handbook available for new commissioners so that they have reading material um, before they have to start their new meetings um, so that they can have this education beforehand as well is the ultimate goal. And so I've sent out my proposals for some training ideas. I kind of wanted to get some feedback from you guys about whether or not you think they're totally off base, or if there's anything else that we should add to it or subtract. If you think it's a terrible idea and leave me alone, or if you want to do something.
I think it's a great idea and I, I like all this stuff you have listed there. I, I would add uh urban renewal districts and how those function and funding on that. That, that's something that kind of gets brought up anytime one of those is proposed.
Okay. Great.
I, I too agree with the, the training. I know I could probably use some.
Hey, are there any, I mean, I just took down the screen, but is there any other topics that you guys think should be added? I know that uh Josh suggested including floodplain permits uh training in it as well to understand the difference between floodplains versus wetlands versus all the other water issues in the city.
It might have already been included in your list, Kelly, but it's always been kind of confusing what part uh, what actually triggers a planning commission hearing and what part is administrative review?
Okay.
Kind of thing.
Okay. I can do that. Any other brilliant topics to think of? Okay. Well, it's, you know, we don't need to come up with all the answers for it now. One thing that uh I do, um, I guess want to ask is timing of when to start this. As Samuel has broken my heart and indicated, he's not coming back at the end of his term. Um, and I know that there's a potential new city council opening um, that, that may be occurring because one of them may be moving. Um, and so I don't know if that means uh there might be some moving up from the planning commission to the city council if uh you're in the right ward. Um, and then we have some vacancies already created, so we will have some new people coming on by this summer. And then I don't know if he wants to start the training in this realm of pixelation, or if you want to wait until we're in person.
I think it'd be more productive in person. Uh, having said that, if it looks like this is going to be, you know, we're going into summer still and still meeting like this and the training's probably, any training is probably better than no training to be able to include that. So kind of play it by ear. My vote would be let's, let's wait till we can do it in person, but I don't want to wait till September, October.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Um, I do have the slightest updates on possibility of coming back to in-person meetings. Um, we still are operating under the, you know, reduction of people within the same room. Um, I know that our IT department is actively working on getting the travel station set up to be able to do a hybrid situation where at least the planning commissioners and the city councils can be in the same room. Um, and then the public would still have to during hearings call in uh through a Zoom meeting due to the spacing requirements. So we are working on that. Last I heard is we're probably not going to be prepared for that for April, but looking better for May as well as.
That'd be good.
Okay.
The sooner the better, I say.
No doubt. And uh, we have Jeff, our new city attorney here that's joined us. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I appreciate you guys letting me be here. Trey said, uh, I guess you guys were having a meeting and I could show up and not have to say or do anything. And I was like, I'm on board. No, it's great. It's kind of a good idea or it's, it's great to kind of get an idea of what, what happens with the city council. And so it's, it's productive. I appreciate you guys letting me sit in.
No problem.
Bet.
Okay. Well, I think I have my marching orders. Um, unless there's anything else to add.
April meeting, is that going to happen?
Very much so with a lot of applications and you will also have the HB two thousand and one ordinance to consider at the April meeting as well.
Lots of new apartments to approve?
Not a single one.
Really? How about that?
You are looking at a potential subdivision. You're looking at a potential mini storage uh developments. Um, there is also a brewery and a food pod that may be on the April meeting, if not May. Um, so not, not a single apartment.
All right.
Yeah. So.
Okay, thanks, Nellie. Uh, unless uh anyone has any objections, um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
All right.
I'm hearing none. So yeah, see everybody next month.
All right, bye.